I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Carty. I'd like to welcome everybody to this monthly first meeting of the month, I guess.
Correct.
Work session, so anybody have any questions in regards to the agenda?
As far as the voluntary bus surrender, the contract, they were all individual owners, correct?
Yes.
Anybody else? All right, nothing else. Mr. Oldham, let's go to, I guess, number eight.
Nobody has answered the sun agenda there.
I'm sorry. Anybody have any questions on the sun agenda? If not, let's go to number eight.
Number eight is for facilities, deductive change order for Smyrna Middle School kitchen hood replacement. Hawke Mechanical Incorporated has submitted a deductive change order in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred dollars. This will reduce the original contract sum from one hundred and thirty-seven thousand down to one hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars for Smyrna Middle kitchen hood replacement. This deduction is for refund of items that were in the initial estimate such as HVAC ductwork removal replacement and ceiling removal replacement totaling twenty-two thousand one hundred. Recommended approval, motion to approve the deductive change order submitted by Hawke Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred dollars for the hood replacement completed at Smyrna Middle School. This will reduce the contract amount to one hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Any questions?
It's good to have deducts, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right, go to B.
B is Stewart's Creek High School football practice field. Dr. Clark Harold has requested permission to construct a football practice field at the Stewart's Creek High School campus. It will be on the east side of the football stadium and will not interfere with the property buffer line. The practice field will be approximately eighty yards by one hundred yards and the cost for irrigation will be slightly less than ten thousand dollars. The laser grading of the field will be donated by Southeastern Turf. The total cost of the project will be approximately twenty thousand dollars to be paid for by the football booster organization and Stewart's Creek High School at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Dr. Harold has requested the practice field be considered now so that construction can begin as funds become available. Recommended approval, motion to approve construction of a football practice field at Stewart's Creek High School as presented at no cost to the board.
Anybody? Discussion?
Is Southeastern Turf already on site doing work or is there any extenuating circumstances that say that this is a good idea to approve without really a timeline attached to it?
You want to step up and talk about maybe?
It's pretty customary to approve this stuff so they can work on it when they need to. I think we, the area they're going to put it in has been planted and sowed at this point. But Southeastern Turf did put in the sod on those other fields for us. We have them on contract with the unit price on sod, so it doesn't have to be bid. Craig Sewell, who owns Southeastern, does a lot of odds and in for us and contributes to the total system here. So I would say, you know, it was, my thought was that in our interest to go ahead and prove it. So if they get some funds in, they can do it however they want to do it.
Or if there's other donations that happen to turn up along the way, then they can go ahead and work along on this?
Right.
Okay, all right. It just struck me as a little odd, you know, to, you know, the nature of this. But I understand, you know, as we're starting up Stewart's Creek, you know, there are things that are not on a typical timeline, so.
How has the sod taken hold at the football field?
It has done great. We had plenty of rain on it. We watered it with a couple of water cannons until we got our irrigation hooked up. Also, we have sod that is taking over on the soccer field that we've prepared in front of the elementary schools. And, you know, it's just done great. The softball field and baseball field look great. I was looking at it today.
So it's, it'll be playable by the first time they, for their first home game?
Yes, it will be. And we actually had sprinkling in the contract, but the contract decided it was a sod it just to get the monkey off its back quicker.
Cool.
Anybody else?
Mr. Carty, let me ask you, and I know we've talked about it a little bit. With football being so big here within the odd schools, is there any way we could get more seating on the visitor's side? Temporary seating if nothing else, if we see after the first game we need it?
It's just an issue of money.
Michigan, okay.
If they all approve the money, we'll put it in.
All right. I'll work on that. Can we get some more money?
They are working on the addition for the ADA compliance and that. We were talking about that today.
But, I mean, you know, if you look at Smyrna, well, you look at pretty much all the rest of them. The vista seating does not compare to those. And we know the games are going to be big in the county there.
We've, we've dealt with Smyrna Laverne trying to get that for, I guess, the last four years. It seems like with the money the way it is, it just keeps getting pushed to the back corner, I guess.
We're in the process. We finally got the shop drawings in on concrete for those two. And so we will be putting concrete in between games over the next few weeks. And then, I think it's about the middle of September, it'll take them about a week to erect the seating and the ramp. So we should get that out of the way pretty quickly.
That's on the handicap?
Handicap and also the few extra rows of seating over on the visitor's side.
Mr. Tucker?
I think it was mentioned in one of our tours or maybe even on the day that the grand opening out there, that the landscaping, some of the landscaping work at Stewart's Creek High School would be done once the weather cooled back down. Can you kind of share with us how that's going to work?
They're in the process now, since the weather's cool, they're putting it in, putting landscaping in. So they'll be continuing that out through the fall until they get it all in. There's a lot of it that goes in out around the parking lot. Out on that back, there's a barrier on that burn that goes in. And there's still more on the front end that goes in. So we, it's normally very hot during this time of year. So we have kind of gotten a mode of delaying that until the weather cools off in the fall. But they feel like it's cool enough now that they can go ahead and put it in.
Anybody else? Number nine, Mr. Oldham.
Number nine, still under financial matters, Blackman Middle School annex bid. Bids were received for the Blackman Middle School annex bid number thirty-two-eight at two o'clock PM August the eighth, two thousand thirteen at the central office boardroom. Bids were received from four contractors and ranged from eight million ninety-seven thousand to seven million sixty-two thousand. The lowest and best bid received was from Biscayne Construction at seven million sixty-two thousand dollars. Recommended approval, motion to award the contract for the Blackman Middle School annex project to Biscayne Construction, the lowest and best bidder at the amount of seven million sixty-two thousand.
Any questions? All right, B.
Okay, A brought about B, it's in this case. General purpose school budget amendments, Blackman Middle School annex. This amendment takes six hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars from unassigned fund balance and transfers it to the building program in order to fund the lowest construction bid for the Blackman Middle School annex building project. The six hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred will be added to the building construction loan for this project. Recommend approval, motion to amend six hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars in the general purpose school unassigned fund balance and transfer it to fund one eighty-nine school building program with the request that the commission increase the construction account for the Blackman Middle School annex building projected by the same six hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars in order to fund the low construction bid. Basically, the cost of construction is going up with the turnaround in the economy. So it was so good that we got Stewart's Creek High in. But you can see here from our earlier estimate, just in this, the beginning turnaround is six hundred thousand. We're usually pretty good at estimating, but that's what it is.
We expect to have a shovel in the ground?
As far as the commission, I spoke with Gary Whitaker today over the city about going ahead and getting the grading permit. So we'll be following for that when it passes tonight. So we, Mr. Sandig, it's like it's okay for us to proceed and the money secure will go for it.
And what's the timeframe as far as beneath the, beneath the construction?
We'll be ready to go next school year.
Okay, wow.
And also I'd just like to state that Mr. Sandig and I will be going through our building plan. We haven't really adjusted the cost up because of cost on our projects and states. Stable are a little bit lower, but we'll be going through the five-year plan and adjusting our prices so that we don't get in this situation. We have missed very many of the last summer end years. Time to start adjusting up, any questions?
It would probably change our estimates with this change. It's probably going to change your estimate for Smyrna Primary School. Just to be aware, because it would be the same type scenario. So, you know, we've already talked to some commissioners to begin to think about this because very likely to see the same thing happens. We, today you had your pre-bid meeting on Smyrna Primary School.
Right.
So that's a, and that will go, that's about to go out for bid. Is it tomorrow, I guess, or something posted or something?
It is going out, I believe, on the, I believe the bid on the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, okay.
Mr. Young, how's our attendance looking over Blackman Middle this?
Blackman Middle School today, the number he turned in was eleven sixty-three. End of year last year was ten eighty-five or seventy-eight.
In the elementary and high school?
Elementary actually did a little bit better. We're seeing now they're at eleven oh-two, which is really only four of the, oh, more what they finished the last year. We had a number, we had about thirty-nine that actually did go to Brown's Chapel, which is two classrooms. So that, that really helped considerably when you look at that. The Blackman High School is at nineteen sixty-five, which is three, three hundred and ninety-one less than we ended last year. So we basically have gone for Stewart's Creek, looks like.
Those numbers don't really solidify till after Labor Day though, do they?
I mean, now that everybody starts for Labor Day, we, it does a little better quicker, but it takes a couple of weeks. Just to kind of let you know how the grandfathering works, Stewart's Creek High. For example, his freshman class is five twenty-nine. His senior class is one eighty. So what's going to happen in those next two years, you know, as that grandfather expires, you're going to be seeing close to five hundred in each of those classes down there is what's going to happen very quickly.
And that's not even taking into consideration the two hundred and twenty lot subdivision that's about to be annexed by the town of Smyrna for subdivision just off of Bines.
Mr. Zago was telling us about that today.
So that's going to, that's going to impact us significantly.
It will.
Anybody else? Uh, two.
Two is spectrum. The state has asked that the gifted program is being moved from the special education major functions to the regular education major function so that Tennessee reporting will be more aligned to federal reporting. This amendment moves one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and six dollars in already budgeted expenditures to function seventy-one one hundred, regular education from seventy-one two hundred, special education, and one hundred fifteen thousand six hundred and seventy-six in already budgeted expenditures to function seventy-two two-ten, regular education program from seventy-two to twenty, special education program. Recommend approval, motion to amend one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and six dollars in already budgeted expenditures to function seventy-one one hundred, regular education from seventy-one two hundred, special education, and to amend one hundred fifteen thousand six seventy-six in already budgeted expenditures to function seventy-two to-ten, regular education program from seventy-two to twenty, special education program as presented. The reason, what you have here is gifted programs are not a federal disability. I mean, that's kind of a strange way to put it, but Tennessee added that as a disability under special education many years ago now. And we added the gifted funding. Well, what, the problem with Tennessee is when they get ready to report, and everything is being done almost electronically now. And so even our things are what we call e-plan filing. We're having to do most of it electronically now. So what the state's trying to do with a series of things that you're going to see here is so that if you can clean out the things that really don't belong in the federal part, then when they push the button, they can transmit the federal part without having to hand remove programs that are not federally connected in some way. So that, it's cleanup things that you do.
So is this just dollars and cents or do we now not consider this a disability?
No, it, it's fully, everything it always has been. This is just an accounting change so that they can do the direct electronic reporting to the federal bill as part of their. Doesn't change anything as far as spectrum is concerned, other than for Jeff over there in the line item, he has to put it in.
You don't see any reason for us to change anything organizationally as, as we look at the spectrum program. It's just a financial?
Because we have to still, they still have an IEP. It all falls under that. And so the issue that we're looking at that, of course, Spectrum's always worked a little bit more closely with instruction, curriculum instruction, Mr. Zago's department than it did especially in the past. But we do, the software that tracks our special education information also tracks the spectrum information, so.
Anybody else? Number three.
Number three, textbooks. This amendment takes one million two hundred and fifty thousand from unassigned fund balance in order to increase the two thousand and fourteen budget for textbooks. One million two hundred thousand for regular education textbooks and fifty thousand for vocational textbooks. The reading adoption textbooks were ordered during June two thousand and thirteen. This is normally the lowest cost of any of the six years in the state's textbook adoption cycle. As orders came in, we wound up spending three million three hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars for this adoption and growth textbooks for other subject areas. The cost of reading adoption has also increased because the state no longer allows the textbook publishers to give us as many teacher editions as we were able to get in the past. On June twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, four hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars had to be added to the purchase order for the reading adoption. Mr. Sandig is already concerned from the initial reading purchase order that the three million five hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventeen budgeted for the two thousand and thirteen fourteen social studies adoption and growth would not be adequate. Recommend approval, motion to amend one million two hundred and fifty thousand from unassigned fund balance and increase, which increases the two thousand and fourteen budget for textbooks as presented. Let me kind of explain some of this, kind of what's happening. We typically, so that we can have textbooks in place, the textbook adoption for social studies, they'll go through the process of selecting books and all this year for use in fourteen fifteen. We typically try to issue the purchase order the June the year before so that you'll have the books in place in August. And so what we're looking for this year, even though the reading now is paid for, we run a few months ahead, which happens with our July one calendar date, drops it in a, in a different year. The other piece there that is interesting, if you notice, the, the teachers' editions. We used to get, for each twenty-five student books, we used to get a teacher's edition. That doesn't happen anymore. They send some and then they turn around and, and we have to buy additional very often to cover that. So there are just several things in the cost, plus the cost of textbooks just going up. And that's what you're running into. We thought now while we have an ending fund balance, it'd be better to go ahead to the county commission and get a revised amount in that is probably going to be more closer than our initial amount was.
So the revised amount, is it to cover the reading adoption that we've already done?
Social studies, you know, it'll be for the social studies adoption, which really is, reading is mostly elementary. Now, there's some vocational in there. Vocational kind of is dropped in with a little bit all along the six-year cycle, different areas of vocational. So basically what this one does, social studies though, really goes K through twelve. You know, so what you're looking at, it, you almost know since reading is almost entirely elementary. You know when you adopt that, that the dollar and cents figure is going to be much larger.
What was the total reading? We had to add four hundred and forty-seven thousand?
It crossed the two million dollar mark. It may have been as high as, it crossed the two million, two to two point four million, I believe. The, one of the invoices had not been properly extended.
Would you say that we saw a thirty percent increase?
From previous reading adoption?
Correct.
At least, yeah.
That would have been six years ago.
Some of the ESL materials on the chart to another line item.
Okay.
It's one of the issues that Mr. Oldham was making, is they don't, they no longer, the state put several mandates on the publishers where they no longer provide our, especially in ESL, their editions for free. In the past years, it was allowed to be free and also they gave us their modules. They would, each textbook company would place a module for us to review the previous year in each one of our schools. So we basically this year would have forty-six different sets of modules for every publisher. And once we adopted one, that publisher would let us keep that entire teacher set up for free. That's been done away with by the state department and under the guise of helping us to reduce the costs.
I don't think it worked.
I don't think so either.
Do you want me to say something about fund balance?
You can if you like. I mean, it's a good time.
Mr. Hodge sent me an email during the budget time about gave me a stroke. But we did wind up over twenty-five million in fund balance. On the budgeted expenditures that we did not use last year, we say we did not spend two point four percent. That was six point eight million that went to fund balance. We also came in three point two million higher in revenues than our budgeted, our amended budgets for revenues. We did a pretty major revenue amendment. And Lisa, we try to be conservative. Well, we came in three point two million. Most of it was our state funding. But we, we were a million two in local over even after that amendment. So when you put those two pieces together and then we took out ten million, a little over ten to balance the budget, we start the year with about just over fifteen million. So we're right at five percent. So taking this one point nine million for this, the textbooks and Blackman Middle shortfall, we should still be in very good shape for the twenty fourteen fifteen budget. Reassure you all on that.
Jeff, with the cancellation of the, I guess, the group part of the Health Reform Act, do we feel like there'll be a much less impact?
We do not know.
Okay.
Because at this point, the, from something I saw today, the individual mandate is still in place.
It is.
It's just the business side of penalties. And we, in our plan, as long as we cover anyone who averages thirty hours a week, which we may, will make the adjustments to, we were in compliance with that. That has been our policy. The interim teachers were the only area we're going to have to shift. We should have, we face no liability on that. But we may see additional enrollments and we won't know until October, November, December.
Tucker?
Time for our yearly question about, we're keeping here to the ground as far as eBooks are concerned or when, when, when we may get out of textbook business. I know that that, that time will come. Any ideas as to when that time may come and how cooperative the book people are toward that end?
You know, one of the things that we kind of learned, also I think I mentioned to you that Apple was one of the first ones that put out the eBooks like that. At fifteen ninety-five per year per book, on a six-year cycle, you're better than ninety dollars. So it was as high or a little higher than some of the elementary textbooks you purchase. I find it interesting, I've read within the last month that someone is actually suing that over price fixing. Evident there's something went on with the textbook companies doing that. So there's something going on right now. The other, the other piece for us is that we very often don't think about is then we've got to furnish the device.
Sure.
And the, the ability to charge it, to, to, battery replacement, charging. So that adds cost to that, around ninety dollars for a six-year cycle, your device and students taking care of them, that sort of thing. The other thing that we have learned, and hopefully the, the additional monies from the state will help, if, if we had been active, if we had not just downloaded a textbook, where some textbooks are really just literally online. We would have not had the capacity in this district with wireless and all to put everybody on it. Because when we started doing our surveys, because this came up because of the park testing. You know, so the two point one million that we're supposed to get from the state to help do that was to increase our bandwidth capacities and to put in the wireless to do that, which was initially for the park. But that should begin to open the door for the textbook piece. Because then you might have the capacities to do more of the book front end. But right now, and it seems really strange to say to people, it's still not the cheapest route because of the devices and the pricing of the books, unless something comes out of this lawsuit that's questioning about some kind of price fixing with that and the textbook companies, something's going to shake out in the next year or two. I mean, it, it will. But I don't know, sure.
Well, I asked the question more for the explanation to those that might be listening because I, we, we hear that a lot.
I know.
And, and it doesn't seem logical. Logical, but it, but it very much is at this point in time. Some, at some point, someone's going to come along with a solution to that, I'm sure. But we'll look like the dark ages back in two thousand and thirteen that we were actually hauling these great big books around. But that time is not there yet.
But even with an eBook, in the school setting, they would have to have an internet connection at home in the evening to utilize that eBook. Is that not correct?
Unless we, unless the eBook, we can download it to a device and store it and work solely from the device. But what you run into is a lot of these eBooks now is they have active links on them. So the kid reading a social studies piece and it gets to something, if you click on this blue word or this, then it's going to take you to a map that's a part of it, which is an integral part of the lesson you're trying to teach. And they would have to have an internet. You're absolutely correct. They would have the print, which is really like the book. But what, what you'll see is books get much, much smaller probably too if they do that.
I wonder Comcast had contacted us a couple of years ago about wanting to make our economically disadvantaged students aware of a program that they, they had for those students. I've noticed now that they're actually advertising that program on cable. I wonder how they're coming.
James, you, you wanna track some of that for us?
Yes, sir. We send that out for them every year. It's getting ready to go out to the next parent newsletter. They offer basically broadband service for any family qualified for three days a lunch. They can get Comcast, I think it's their medium speed broadband service, pretty fast, for ten dollars a month.
Do you know if that's being utilized? Do they share with you how it's been?
They haven't shared it with me. I kept asking if they would share that with me. They have not, I think.
Let's ask and see. We'll make a call and see.
That'd be, that'd be interesting.
Um, while, while we're at this, James was showing me something today that, that I was very impressed with. James, are you, are you afraid to mention the app, or are we best not to? Where, where are we on it? Would you, can you, can you come up here where they can hear you? Uh, looks, looks exciting to me.
Uh, through our contract with School Messenger, which is what we use to make announcements to parents through email and phone, uh, they started working with me last spring about a new product that we're going out, uh, which is already included in our existing contract. It's a mobile app for the district. It'll be branded with our district, so it'll say Rutherford County Schools as the app, or RCS, something like that. Uh, there are some other free alternatives out there, but most of them don't have your actual name on it. It's like, it's, there's, uh, Jostens has a product, a couple of others have a product where you actually have an app that you can sign up for, and then parents would have to navigate through their app to find your district's information. This is one that's pretty unique. Uh, and we'll have the testing phase in a couple of weeks. I went through one of the final walkthroughs today. And then we are planning to launch it the week after fall break, so mid-October.
A parent can click on the app and see what the menu is today at school, on the menu there. Uh, zoning information, uh, that sort of thing is a click away. It's very, there's a, when you download the app, there's at least six or eight different options of things that you can choose.
They can pull up their students' grades through the parent portal. It'll be linked to there. They can pay for their child's lunches through the app. So, it, it's a lot of the stuff that we already have on our website now, but it'll be in a mobile format that works with Android, uh, Apple, tablets and phones.
Wow.
It is very impressive.
And it's free for parents, of course. There's not a charge for it.
Number four.
Number four is energy position, initially funded by grant. This amendment funds sixty-four thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for the energy management position that is part of the Energy Efficient School Council, EESC, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand sixty-dollar allocation to Rutherford County Schools to establish an ongoing energy management program. Mr. Cardy plans to fill this position as a maintenance worker full lead. The revenue will be recorded in account forty-six five ninety, other state revenue. The balance of the grant will be handled by later amendment, in other words, what devices and things that we need to purchase to connect with that. Recommend approval, motion to amend sixty-four thousand nine eighteen and other state revenue account forty-six five ninety, and to amend sixty-four thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars in staff and benefits for the system's energy manager as presented.
Any questions? Number five.
Number five is career ladder. This amendment reduces the system's career ladder extended contract revenue and the related career ladder expenditures by thirty-seven thousand five hundred and seven. The amendment also reclassifies the superintendent's chief operating officer supplement from career ladder extended contract seventy-two three twenty dash one twenty-seven to career ladder seventy-two three twenty dash one seventeen in order to match state funding, state reporting. Motion to reduce career ladder extended contract revenue account forty-six six twelve and the related career ladder expenditure by thirty, thirty-seven thousand five hundred and seven to reclassify the superintendent's chief operating officer supplement as presented. Kinda explain that to you. Um, the, the, the state is again, this is part of their changes. The chief operating officer thing is very similar to what you do as board members. You know, you have to earn so many CEO credits or credits for board member. Since, since directors of schools and superintendents are not, are, are really chosen by local boards, they, I mean, and authorize the local boards, you determine that. In order to, to put an incentive out there to try and get their superintendents to, uh, take other courses and do things, they offer a one thousand dollar state-funded, if you, if you get your CEO hours in for the year, then they'll add one thousand dollars to your pay. Ms. Joyce keeps me straight and said we could get our hours in. So, that, it's, it's very similar to what you do in terms of Tennessee School Board Association. I know this is for the superintendent, so. So, it's just a requirement they're making to, to way that we log it again for this E-plan reporting. Right, Jeff?
Any question? C.
C is Capital Projects Fund one seventy-seven Amendment for Ongoing Projects. Each year, all capital projects fund outside, outstanding purchase orders are liquidated on July one, and the unexpended amounts revert to fund balance. This amendment effectively sets up the next stage of funds that were on these closed purchase orders as of June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. This year's amendment covers four unfinished projects for a total of four hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty-four. Those four projects are Smyrna Laverne Stadium seating, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Smyrna Metal Roofing, two hundred and twenty-six thousand and forty-six dollars. Central Office Paving, ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. And repairs to Angie Road at Wilson Elementary School, twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Recommend approval, motion to amend four hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty-four from the Capital Project Fund Balance in order to complete two hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and thirteen, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen project as presented. I was not aware till this really came up, that the road that goes in, you know, from Jefferson Pike, that goes up by Wilson there, is our road. We offered it to the county, but they didn't take it. And it's a through street. And, and really, we had to go out there and make repairs. And what tore it up was when they were building the houses and doing the construction, all the gravel trucks, concrete trucks and that sort of thing. It was, the specifications we built for, for school thing didn't match as a county road. But so far, they haven't, if y'all have any influence with the highway people or anything, we could turn that road over. We're gonna keep our parking lot in our drive. That's what it is.
D.
B is insurance update wellness upcharge going to commission. This is for information only, and Jeff and, and Ms. Paula can explain this to you. A proposal to add a monthly wellness upcharge to Rutherford County Employee Insurance Plan was deferred until the July two thousand thirteen insurance committee meeting, when rates were set at the May meeting. The upcharge passed at the July meeting and will be forwarded to the commission's budget committee and the full commission in August. The proposed change is a thirty dollar per month additional charge for any board education employee covered by our insurance plan who does not have a biometric screening done and at least includes a lipid panel screening, CPT code eight hundred and sixty-one. The thirty dollar per month charge would start in March two thousand fourteen. Thirty dollars for each of the ten months of insurance deductions for Board of Education employees, which is the same as twenty-five dollars for each of the twelve months for county general employees. At this time, the upcharge does not apply to spouses or dependents. As long as the employee has a lipid panel screening done between January one, two thousand thirteen, and February seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, he or she will not have to pay the additional thirty dollar charge. If the employee does not have this screening done by February seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, the thirty dollar per month charge will start in March two thousand fourteen and continue through December two thousand fourteen. The measure of period for this test for the two thousand fifteen year plan still remains to be determined. This change is similar to a change the state made in its insurance program a couple of years ago, when they added the partners, uh, for health option for Tennessee. Covered employees who opt out of the program will have higher premiums and slightly reduced benefit under this Tennessee program. Um, Paula and, um, Jeff, y'all wanna come up and we'll grill you on this change, what it is.
When did?
You know, as I look at insurance things, we're not far away from, uh, they'll be taking a swab on the inside of our, our DNA and, you know, determining what you pay. We're not far away.
I'm pretty unfamiliar with, with the requirement. Uh, I, I guess I do enough group business that, that I've seen this type uh, process on the, on the front end. And, uh, when did this come about and how did it come about? Cause I, I, I'm not sure that I've heard anything about this prior to.
It was actually on the agenda for the May, uh, insurance committee meeting. That was the first we had heard about this proposal.
It, it was mentioned at a work session that we had on, as an insurance committee, but.
But that's not the full committee.
Barely mentioned, yeah.
And so, it was on the agenda, and the proposal was explained to the committee, and there was quite a bit of discussion from all parties in the room about this proposal. Our recommendation was that they wait a year until two thousand fifteen to implement this, to give us time to iron out all the details of the plan. Not that it's a bad idea to help people identify risks that they might have and help lower healthcare costs, but to give us time to plan it, to get the information out, and not couple it with the year that insurance rates are going up. So, they did defer it at that time, and we actually thought that it would not move forward until after January. But at the next meeting in July, because we skipped the June meeting, they, um, brought this up again, and it did pass the committee vote. There were only two votes against it, which was Rutherford County Board of Education.
Three, three against.
Three.
Now, who, who pays, pays for the lipids test?
You can go to Med Point Clinic as an employee under our Health Healthcare Plan and have that done, or you can go through your private physician, if you choose to, and have that report sent to SICMA. Those are details, we still don't know how they're gonna process that, that transition of reports. But it was stated that either or would work.
And I, I know, I, I'm in the HRA plan. That type of test is already a covered expense at no cost to me in that option. It is, if, if you go to the Med Point clinics, it would, there would be no charge for you. And they are the, one of the things that was very controversial at the May meeting was, and, uh, I have my blood tested twice a year. In the initial proposal, neither of those times would've counted. So, okay, I'll go do it a third time. Uh, but that, that was modified. Uh, again, my concern was, we had already set the rates. I would've preferred to wait. But, uh, it is, on, on the plus side, it is a totally avoidable increase as long as you get that test done by February seventeenth.
Now, in our meeting, we did talk about people such as myself. I had my work done in July. So, we, we are have yet to determine the cutoff. You know, Jeff's note said from January to February.
Right.
But they will accept blood work done before that time.
Yes.
We're just not sure what the cutoff date is, whether it's gonna be September one of thirteen or May of thirteen.
Well, no, no, we're covered, January one of thirteen.
All the way through.
Through February seventeenth of two thousand fourteen, if you have had this test, you're covered.
So.
I guess, I guess one question I've had, cause I've, I've had a few calls on this myself, uh, do y'all get an agenda?
Uh, it was mentioned as what? A wellness program, uh, yeah.
It's a title. It's, it's just a, a one-line title. It doesn't give us any description of what the discussion will be about that. So, again, we didn't recognize this to be anything.
I guess, I guess.
Concerned about.
Yeah.
I guess where I'm going with this at, uh.
Let me tell you what we're gonna do. We, we're going, we're going to start, um, sometimes they get the agenda two days before the meeting. But we're gonna start sending you via email the agenda that we give. Now, if you want to contact Paula or Jeff, you better look quickly, because, I mean, it'll say on the agenda how many days lead you got. But I'm just saying, don't expect to, you probably won't have a board meeting or sometime to do it collectively. I mean, from the way they send it out, so.
And there.
We're gonna start sending it to you.
There is always other business, which is.
I guess, I guess what disturbs me, uh, you don't have time to get it out to the employees. To what's going on, what's going on up there. Uh, and I think, I just think it's not done correctly, okay? And the reason I say it's not done correctly, uh, you oughta have a little bit more notice in this, uh, of a big issue like this. Uh, then the board gets feedback, and, and basically, the board gives you information to go forward with.
Mr. Hodge, there are three members that represent Rutherford County Board of Education. There are Jeff and I, and Regina Harvey, who is an REA representative, and there are twelve, twelve, right?
Eleven or twelve.
Voting members on the committee. There's the Sheriff's Department, the Highway Department, um, I forget the wrong.
Other, yeah.
Rutherford County Government.
Citizens at large.
And there are citizens at large. And this really passed overwhelmingly through all the other members of the committee. Again, because the concept is a good idea. The timing was bad in our perspective.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with the concept.
Right.
I, I, I just think it's something that, uh, uh, our employees oughta, oughta have some kind of knowledge of, uh.
What we're going to do also after our meetings, when we have our meetings, we'll just send an email update to all of the board members to kinda let you know what was covered in these meetings, and elaborate on anything such as this, so y'all know what's going on.
Isn't this on the full commission agenda this Thursday night?
Yes, sir.
Thursday night, yes, sir.
So, Thursday night, it's, it's made it through committees that quickly. Is on the full commission agenda for Thursday night?
Considering we have the majority in county employees, and we have so little representation on the insurance committee, uh, how is that, is there, Jeff, is there some kind of county regulation that, that, that sets that up, that, you know, that?
The insurance committee was set up many, several years ago by the county commission, so certainly, if you wanted to ask the county commission to revisit that issue and maybe look at a different configuration of that committee, the board could request to do that. But as it currently stands, it's just a, um, the committee membership was, was established by the county commission when that committee was set up.
So, the road board has how many, they have one, and Sheriff's Department has?
Now, two. Uh, when the Board of Ed was given another seat on the committee, they added additional seats for other departments at the same time, which basically diluted us even more.
So, our plan is, if that works for you, is to send you an email, send an email to the board members after every insurance committee meeting with an update about what was covered, and again, elaborate on any topic that we think might rise to the surface. Most of it, we have wellness updates, we have insurance plan updates with numbers, we have OJI updates, so pretty standard things that are covered at every meeting. And then sometimes we have to look renewal of programs, such as the life insurance and things like that. Those go through bid processes, and we observe vendor presentations and, and make those kinds of votes. But these cost issues don't come up.
Or, or plan changes, and they don't come up at all.
Right.
Most of it is the more routine stuff. Paula suggested that a- after this passes the commission, that we start communicating this to our employees right now and not wait until open enrollment in October.
So, we've drafted some information about rate increases and a surcharge, to send it out and say, this is going to be coming out in October, and an open enrollment is always in October of every year. This year, they have narrowed the open enrollment time period from four weeks to two weeks. They plan to do a mail-out to all employees that includes a DVD with all of the information. They have scheduled, uh, are in the process of scheduling information meetings at all of the area high schools. Two meetings per high school, different times, the evenings, afternoons, and on Saturdays, for anyone to attend any of the meetings, to ask questions and get assistance when completing their, uh, selections for next year. Um, the default, i- if someone, if I went in, looked at everything, but did not submit my choice, I would automatically default to my current plan, so I wouldn't automatically change if I failed to go in and re-enroll. So, that's a good thing. Um, but we haven't seen the package for re-enrollment yet, for the open enrollment yet. That hasn't been shared with us.
And it's, it's under design, is my understanding.
In, in the conversation with the, uh, insurance committee, was it discussed at all, uh, extending this to other participants in the program who are not employees?
That discussion did come up, and at some point, that will probably happen. Now, when we went with the Care Here clinics, however many years ago, one of, one of the positive effects, we, 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 yeah, it's, we called it, or this, a health risk assessment, as a free-to-the-employee, uh, blood work. as a free to the employee, uh, blood work, cholesterol, all of that. And several, more than several, a fair number of employees found out they had, were diabetic or had some, uh, blood pressure, heart issues that they started getting treatment for. That is part of what we are trying to accomplish through this upcharge. Uh, and get treatment before some of these things become major problems. And we were very, we, we had some, I don't remember how many, but there were several people with advanced diabetes who didn't know and, uh, heart issues and all that.
So what we don't know at this point is if people submit to this, this blood screen, and it's a screen. This lipid panel is a short screen. It's not a very thorough. It's, it's cholesterol, uh, a three post, all the main things.
Yeah.
But, uh, we're not sure then that information will go to Cigna and we assume that Cigna will then reach out to the employee if there is an issue and talk about preventative measures.
What's the, what's the chance of, of them coming out to, uh, each site to draw it?
I'm, I'm sorry, same here.
Well, what I'm saying, to, to do this screening, draw the blood work, uh, I guess what I'm saying versus having all the employees have to go out to all these, wherever they have to go.
Yeah.
Uh, what's the chance of them basically coming out here to the individual schools or coming to central office?
I asked that question actually, because if they were going to enforce this, I think they're going to bring this, this HRA to the schools. And they've done that in the past. They have held HRA clinics in several school sites from maybe seven to nine in the mornings. Uh, Melissa Stinson's response was there was no way to cover all forty-six school sites during that timeframe, but that they would try to make some accommodations for, for short-term clinics where people could come in and get that done.
Perhaps even coordinating with those, uh, renewal meetings.
That's a good idea. And we'll bring that up. We have an insurance meeting on Thursday.
No.
Next, in, in a couple of weeks. We'll bring that up.
But I doubt, a downside, the, the cholesterol panel is a fasting test, so that is, yeah, scheduling gets a little more.
But they did say that they would have staff available at all of the Med Point clinics and our, our employees can use the Walgreen clinics. I'm not sure if they can do that, the blood panel there, but that may be an option as well. So they felt like our clinics could accommodate our employees if they needed to do that.
I'm just trying to make convenience for the employees too. But if you would get us that agenda, uh, as quick as you could, uh, I just feel like we're always, we're always behind times. I mean, you go for the meeting, you report to us. It's after the fact. Uh, I guess that's, that's what disturbs me a little bit. You know, uh, for our employees, I guess where I'm coming from.
You know, I'm concerned about the, we have over four thousand employees, two weeks. Do a little math about how many, if everybody, since it's going to default, but last year, everybody had to go online to even keep it. So when I looked at that, I thought, my goodness, you can do a little math and see how many per day and we're one segment of county government, so. That may not go real smoothly. Let me stop and think about it.
What else?
You'll see plenty of emails coming from this office about during open enrollment with reminders to our staff about, no, they've left, they, they've left to get this done, don't forget.
And unfortunately, we wind up with a fair number of employees who no matter how we try to notify them, don't go on and then are upset if they wind up in an option or with some part of their plan that they got lost.
Is it during, is, is the two weeks going to fall during the fall break time or is it going to fall?
We haven't seen the dates yet.
I think it's at, right at.
We haven't seen the dates. I really don't have any information yet.
All right, thank you. I'm kidding, Michelle.
Number ten, proposed central office position. The Director of Schools Contract states that any new central office positions must have board approval. The proposed position is a two hundred and sixty-day contract for an instructional specialist to support reading language arts instruction on behalf of elementary school students, teachers and administrators. The job description provides more details of the expectations for this position. Recommend approval, motion to approve a new two hundred and sixty-day central office position for an elementary, elementary reading specialist. We actually had in the budget, uh, which you funded a, the funds for a science specialist. As we've gone through the testing and looked at it and considered the number of students we have in elementary, we think it's wise now to probably employ some of the system our size to work with a reading specialist for it, to work with our teachers and other staff. I mean, people don't really realize how many, and Mr. Zago, you're about to help me with this, how many specialists that we have. But you basically have a math specialist work six through twelve. Um, we have a six through twelve English Language Arts Reading or whatever specialist like that. And Linda Pritchett, which we have a K, pre-K through, uh, kind of K or one specialist there.
Linda Pritchett's position, just to explain that to you, the number of daycares that one manager will manage, she's doing that times, I want to say nineteen, uh, different, uh, preschool areas. So it's basically managing that number of daycares at one time. So the, the number of, the amount of work that, that she does, or when Mr. Oden was talking about the specialist for the six twelve, it's actually a specialist for six twelve math and science. We were talking about splitting that one and that's what was in the budget for that. But science is, doesn't have that need that reading does according to test scores and our, our school needs and student needs within the classroom. Uh, other specializes, we have a language, foreign language, language specialist for six twelve two, which is A.D. Emery. And her job description will change the school that includes reading because of the amount of reading needed in, in middle school to cover them in six, eight and also nine, twelve. We're actually looking at Laverne and we're, uh, giving some reading instructions to all the incoming freshmen just because of the, the, the lack of, uh, learning that has taken place in some of our reading areas. Uh, so we're playing catch-up. We're hoping to add this position so that we can focus more on the start of a student's career as a, as a learner. And so we don't have as many issues in that middle school possible like we have now. But there are very few specialists, specialists and very few people, uh, in the instruction department to support those areas, those specific sized areas.
Any questions? Number eleven.
That's, that's your policies. And of course, uh, we have a couple of motions at the end, unless you want me to just read all the policies.
No, no, no.
They recommend approval, motion to waive the second, uh, reading, second meeting limitation to allow the board to take immediate action on the policies presented. Recommend approval, motion to approve policies three point four oh five, six point three oh nine, five point three oh seven, one point one zero eight, three point two oh two, six point two hundred, six point three sixteen, four point three oh one, one point eight oh two, six point three oh four, four point two oh four, five point three oh five, one point seven oh three, four point six oh one, three point two eleven, six point forty thirty-one, six point two oh four, one point four oh seven and six point four, four oh nine one, as recommended by the policy committee. You might have repeated that. One more time.
Mr. Michael, the, the one we, can you give them an update on the one we had a question on, uh, what you found out? You and I talked about it. Just give it a go.
Uh, there, there are no negative consequences to not adopting those changes. Our wellness coordinator is required for her grant requirements, the state requirements to present them to you, but it's up to you to adopt them. So you will probably see them again, um, but no negative consequences.
Thank you. Anybody else?
What is the, uh, policy number for the new, uh, policy regarding sexual misconduct? I'm trying to cross-reference that.
Six point four oh.
Six point four oh nine one, okay.
Anybody else? Skip over twelve, uh, do that Thursday. Number thirteen.
Thirteen is collaborative conferencing committee pursuant to section forty-nine five six oh five. The Board of Education is required, education is required to appoint management personnel to serve on a committee. Board of Education representatives for collective collaborative conferencing committee are Paula Barnes, Richard Zago, Trey Duke, Kim Day, Kelly Gustrie, Fed Barlow and Ginny Fitzpatrick.
All right. Number fourteen, general discussion. No discussion? Ms. Paula, there?
Since you asked, uh, do you have an idea as to when we might meet in September, first meeting?
I guess, Ms. Mike.
I'm working on it. It's.
Not yet?
No.
All right.
I'm sorry.
More of a question from the home front than from me, so.
Wave it on the wire. There you go.
I will have an act of the new chair named, appointed.
Is that an issue?
That's first week in September.
Okay, so we will meet first week in September then?
Probably, yes.
All right. What else?
I guess the, uh, the open house went as well as we could have hoped for with, uh, Stewart's Creek, uh, standing room only and, uh, continue to be amazed that, uh, that building was, and all the facilities were completed, what, twenty-two months? Which is pretty phenomenal. Very well done. Of course, Ms. Michaels always seems to make sure everything she touches, uh, turns to gold anyway.
Be a nagger.
Runs smoothly, do you? Yeah, yeah. So, thank you, Ms. Michaels.
Thank you.
If I can comment to that, Ian, I, I, I thought especially good that they have, they went the route they did with their fights on, not to just adopt an old fight song, but to, to have their faculty people write it, arrange it and bring the worst. I, I, I think that's really a good idea and, and, uh, I would encourage the next time we have a high school, we'd kind of share that information with them and see if they wouldn't go that route. I think it's a great idea.
Seemed like the people there really adopted it too. All the applause that was at the end was welcomed.
Last Friday, as part of the Commissioner of Education's, um, he made a request to us. He, he has promised us to speak to ten thousand teachers or so. So he did come last Friday and, uh, we just spent about twenty minutes praising our, in fact, he made one statement. He said, we need Rutherford County to help teach some of our other counties that are struggling a little more about how to make this achievement. We actually, we had the audience of teachers at, uh, all the Stewart's Creek schools there and then we did a live streaming across Rutherford County, which was our kind of first test to see how well we could do with live streaming too, so. Uh, that seemed to go quite well. He, he bragged on our people rightly so.
Anybody else? Just remind everybody, we're back here again Thursday night, five o'clock. We're done.